And in five seconds. Sorry about that. Uh, our September 12th, 2024 city council meeting is now called to order. First, we'll have an invocation from Tim Butler with East Texas Food Bank. He will lead our prayer and pledge. East Texas Food Bank's mission is to fight hunger and feed hope in East Texas. And they recently opened a resource center in Longview October of last year. They're already feeding 1,100 families per week, which is incredible. We're very grateful to them. September is Hunger Action Month, and they are encouraging you to donate peanut butter this month in a Longview versus Tyler community challenge. So bring your peanut butter. We're collecting up here at City Hall and my office or any Super One or Brookshores in town through September 27th. But Tim, come on up and please rise.
Please join me for prayer. Dear Lord, we come to you with grateful hearts, asking you for your wisdom and guidance in tonight's meeting. Please provide us with clarity of mind, humility of spirit, and the compassion to service community with integrity. Please make each decision made tonight reflect justice, mercy, and compassion. Please bless this board, this city, and all who dwell within it. Amen.
Amen.
Join me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Uh, next on our agenda is presentation of a proclamation recognizing October 1st, 2024 as Longview's National Night Out. Chief Boone also has a presentation, but Chief Boone, I'll ask you to join me up here, and we'll do the proclamation up here.
All right, come on guys.
Thank you, my friend. Come on down. Come on up. Come on up. As they're coming on up here, um, I just want to brag on our National Night Out team. If you were not aware, National Night Out is coming up the first Tuesday in October. So that's October 1st this year. And National Night Out is our way of bringing neighborhoods together to make Longview stronger. It's encouraging neighborhoods to have crime watches, to get out and to meet your neighbors. And so this is our hardworking team that makes National Night Out happen. And Chief Boone will tell us a little bit more about that in just a second. But whereas the mayor by proclamation recognizes October 1st, 2024 as National Night Out Day in the city of Longview, and whereas National Night Out began in 1984 and is a unique crime, drug, and violence prevention program with participation in more than 17,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide, and will be celebrated here in the city of Longview on October 1st, 2024. Whereas the annual National Night Out provides an opportunity for Longview and Gregg County citizens to participate in local gatherings and recognize the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in our community. Police, community partnerships, and neighborhood safety cooperation are the important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I as mayor of the city of Longview do hereby proclaim the day of October 1st, 2024 as National Night Out Day in the city of Longview. Thank you, guys, for all your work. We are very grateful. You are making Longview stronger. And, um, do you want to talk about this? Or where's Chief Boone? There you are. You gonna do it from that down there? Okay, perfect. Well, Chief Boone will give us a presentation on it. So thank you, guys, so much for everything.
We're tag teaming.
All right.
Good evening, Mary Ishihara, members of council and Mr. McPhee. For decades, the city of Longview has worked through various prevention initiatives to make our entire community safer for all our residents. These efforts have included the Just Say No campaign in the eighties and early nineties, the creation of Longview's Own Drug Task Force in 89 that is now known as Partners in Prevention, Red Ribbon Week, McGruff the Crime Dog telling us to take a bite out of crime, the Longview Fire Department teaching us stop, drop, and roll, and of course, turn around, don't drown. And tonight, we are here to communicate some exciting news about one of our preeminent Longview events, National Night Out. It is a massive collaboration of the police department, Partners in Prevention, the Longview Fire Department, and the Gregg County Sheriff's Office that brings neighbors together to help prevent crime in our community. Chief Boone.
So National Night Out obviously isn't something that began in Longview, Texas. It actually first kicked off in the seventies in Pennsylvania with just some people in the neighborhood getting together. And then from there, it, it just grew. And then 1984, it actually became a national organization, National Night Out. I know we've been participating at least since the nineties as a rookie officer here. I can remember still being in field training, going to parties. So it is something that's just been a part of our culture for, for decades. And it's a, it's a great opportunity just to get out there and, and meet and mingle with, with your community. And our partnerships just continue to grow. This is just some of the partners that we have on this right now, but it's, it's also awesome that all of our school districts are involved with this. All three will be hosting some form of a party as well. Besides our parties that are in the neighborhoods that allow the neighbors to meet each other and kind of mingle with each other, obviously also our sheriff's department, they will be hosting parties at the same time as us out in the county as well. And again, we can't do this without Partners in Prevention, Longview Fire Department, our PAR, Police Area Representatives Group. They spend months and months planning this and putting this together. So it's, it's easy for most of us that we just kind of show up and get to go out there and visit, but there's a lot of work that goes into this. And definitely our community members that are hosting the parties, lots of work is being done by them. If you haven't had a chance to listen to our most recent podcast, one of our residents, Ms. Linda Johnson, talks about all the prep that she does to get ready for this as well. Also, the community impact, there's just a couple quotes up there. One from our where elementary principal, Ms. Faith Newhouse Greer. We want all kids and families to come out and have fun. It's about telling the students to know that all these people here care about them. And, um, it really is, it's, it's getting to understand that somebody, just because you're wearing a uniform, you're still a person. It's great interactions. And sometimes the only time people have a chance to interact with us like that. And they get to find out that we eat more food groups than just donuts. We participate in all the food that's out there, and there's some great food to be had. And it's truly, it's just breaking down those barriers and getting to know your neighbors. And also, I've got to brag just a little bit. There is actually with National Night Out, there's a national competition as well. And last year, we were ranked 14th out of the nation for cities the size of 50 to 100,000. And we're hoping to, uh, continue to go down that scale. And then also this year, we were, um, for outstanding, we were awarded Outstanding Crime Prevention Agency in 2024 by the Crime, Texas Crime Prevention Association. And that also, so we were ranked, we were number one with that. And that's again for cities 50 to 100,000 inside Texas. So definitely proud of those awards, but even if there were no awards to be had, it's still a great cause and a great thing to do to get out with our community. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you, either of you know how many parties we have registered so far this year?
Last year, we had 81. Right now, I think we're about tied with that, but we still have more to go. And we may not meet the triple-digit barrier, but I want to be very close to 100 parties.
That'd be great.
Uh, I don't have, I don't have a comment about National Night Out. I love it, and I love the, the impact it has with our community. But I wanted to give recognition to one of our school resource officers, Brian Bankston, had a, um, recently I was, uh, he's housed at our junior high. And he had a, I was just driving over and I saw him in a, in a parking lot at the convenience store, and he was helping someone, um, with, that had car trouble, ran out of gas.
Yes, sir.
And he didn't just give him a ride, he, he was paying for the guy's gas. And I, I think a lot of those stories need to be told, and I just, he didn't ask for that recognition, but I want to give him a shout out for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's awesome. It's a perfect example of community policing. Yeah, perfect. Absolutely. Any other questions for Chief Boone or Ms. Hill?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Great job. Uh, next on our agenda is citizen comment. I have one speaker card from Ms. Brenda Woolridge. If you would, ma'am, just state your name and your address and get going.
My name is, wait, this is not my three minutes. I want to give Mr. Boone kudos for, we had a problem in our neighborhood, and we needed more police, uh, circulation. And when I mentioned it to him, he immediately got on it, and we immediately saw a difference. And I appreciate you for that. My name is Brenda Woolridge. I live at 2217 South 13th Street, Longview, Texas. I'm here this evening, uh, regarding three things, and I'm just going to live and y'all can think about which one you want to do something about. The first one was our streets. Last year, year before last, I asked the gentleman at the Streets Department where we were getting my street, 13th Street, because between 12th and 13th, uh, that's the only street that's not paved and gutted, and that's on the street that's not fixed. And I was told that this year in March that it would be done, well, it's September. So I wanted to address that. And the next thing is the limbs. We had a storm last year, I think it was in November, February sometime, and we had a lot of limbs, we had a lot of limbs on, just everywhere. But on the south side, y'all, we still have those same limbs from last year. And I called the city about that, and I talked to a gentleman, Mr. Wallace, and I asked him about it. He said, he sent men out to gather that, but it's still there. And it's all down the street, Berth Zone, 12th Street, it's just limbs piles and piles. And this was from last year. And the last one was, um, the Lee Channel deal. I don't know how y'all are dealing with that, but last, last time they built, the building that they built, um, we had flooding in our homes. And so that let me know or think that the city did not do a good evaluation of how it would affect the people on the south side of town, because we had several homes that were flooded, they had to be fixed, they had drainage problems, and we're still dealing with drainage problems from that situation. And so with this next thing that y'all are thinking about doing, or you don't, well, it's already done, because we went to the planning committee, uh, meeting, and I knew already that it was set, but I would ask that you all would consider what it would do to our neighborhoods, because it had a great impact with the last time they did. Not that we don't want them to bear, I would lovely turn to be there. I graduated from the channel, my daughter graduated from the channel. So I have no problem with the school, but my problem is knowing that our community would be not be destroyed or ruined because of this building, of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woolridge. Mr. Archer, do you mind? Yeah, got it. I know the person that you need to be in touch with, so we'll, we'll get him in touch with you. Um, next on our, I do not have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone that would like to fill out a card and speak during citizen comment? Don't see anybody, so we'll move on. In our discussion item, discuss a one-time cost of living increase for city employees for fiscal year 2024, 2025. We don't have a presentation for this, so I'll, I'll kick that off and council can discuss. Of course, you guys remember during the budgeting process, we talked about a couple of options, asked Roland to bring us some creative solutions on offering, uh, if we could do raises during the year. We've ultimately approved the budget that did not have room for cost of living increases as an ongoing expense. But I understand there was some desire to come back and talk about whether we wanted to do a one-time cost of living increase, um, that would be taken from our reserves and done as a one-time thing for our employees. I think I can speak for everybody when I say we value our employees very much. And so that's the discussion item on here tonight. So if anybody has discussion or comments or questions, now's the time.
Yeah, well, my comment is simply just to make sure that we understand that there was amount of money that was going back into the reserves, correct?
Sure.
And so that is the money that we're talking about, the 700,000 that is going back into the reserves, and that's what we want to use for a one-time budget. And my suggestion is $1,000 for hourly employees.
Okay, so a, we have in our reserve fund right now, Roland had calculated for me, updated adding that 700, which is what was saved essentially from this current budget that we would expect to move to reserves, wasn't spent during this, let's say, 2024? Thanks. Budget. That leaves in our reserves anticipated for the end of the year, which would actually be 16 million. So when we were talking during the budget process, um, that would be where those would be drawn from, and you know, the 700 is, is part of that. So yes. We have, just for sake of conversation, 940 total employees, 879 of those employees are hourly, 61 of those are salaried. I will say that I personally feel strongly, if we're going to do it, we should do it for every employee. I think that's the best way that we show value to each of them. But that's just math then. So if we did 1,000 per employee, that would be 1,000 times 940, or 1,000 times 879. That's probably, that's a significant chunk. But that's, I suppose, what we're here to discuss.
Well, I mean, that's my stance on it.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else with anything else?
Open for discussion. I may, yeah, I may use my calculator real quick. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Crowley.
Well, I appreciate, we asked for creativity, and I think this is an opportunity we've discussed about the ways we could not have an ongoing expense. And we do know that, um, with inflation, with cost of living, um, I think the, the month, the funds could definitely benefit our employees and show our appreciation for those that, that need it the most and keep them, um, uh, you know, we know, we talked earlier, we've talked in our budget about recruitment and retention, being able to attain good people. It's important to make sure we take care of them if possible. That's all I got. Thanks.
Okay, we're hitting a million dollars basically, and to give everybody a raise, but the raise would have been an ongoing expense year after year after year. So if we do 1,000, or if we do 500, it's, uh, we need to do something, one way or the other. It's, it's, it's got to happen, because cost of living is, is affecting everybody, and the more we can give, the better off we could give. Now, the reserve funds, how much is in that reserve fund? Kristen just said 16 million. Uh, we had $30 million going in, and we took out three and a half, and then we took out some more for something else that Laura had on a, on a grant or something. So we should have...
10% in reserves is already deducted off that. So we had 20 at the time.
Okay, okay. So that's the 10%. Okay.
Above reserves is 16 million. Yes, sir.
Okay, so...
Yeah. I personally feel like 1,000 is too much. I would be more on board with 500. And again, I really feel strongly we do that for everybody, because it's very little cost savings to do it for just the salaried versus everybody. Go ahead.
On this, if we do the contribution, uh, does it, we have to match on the retirement side or anything like that as well in addition to this?
That, that would be deducted from the, we'd still have to take taxes and, and TMRS and social security and Medicare. All of those still have to get deducted.
Okay, so it's not above and beyond for that? So it's, it would be that?
That's correct.
Um, and then also, I mean, if we did, if we had the 700, $700,000 surplus that we have, that's, you know, let's say 750 per employee would, would offset that. So we can talk about that. And then the other thing, too, I do want to give kudos, the reason why we're talking about having this, this surplus is due to the credible work that the city staff has done in managing the budget, even with sales tax being down roughly about $2 million or more from our projections. So I want to say thank you to city staff, thank you to everybody that did a great job with that as well. So thank you.
Um, I'd just like to, uh, also agree that I feel comfortable with giving around 500 or even 750 to all city employees as a one-time expense. I think the economy is tough on all of us, especially our city staff that works so hard. So I would feel comfortable with something along those lines.
Thank you.
We, we put back in 700, right?
Yes, 16, 201. Yes, sir. That's based on estimates.
I think that's the amount we ought to use to give out to the employees. It won't be 500, but it won't be 1,000. And that was money that they helped us save. So I think that would, to me, that would be more realistic. We weren't counting on those funds, and, um, $500 is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money. I mean, the time you start deducting everything off of it and all, it's, it's going to, going to take a chunk out of it. So if we ate up the 700 doing that, I think that would be a lot more prudent to, to give them a chunk of change myself.
That makes sense. I mean, I can agree with that, as long as we're using the surplus of the seven, the 700,000, it goes back to the employees that help us save the money.
So makes good sense to me. Yeah, everybody feel?
Appreciation for employees. And we got to keep our, we got a great, a lot of great people. And like you said, we've done a great job of saving. Let's reward them and help them with some inflation. Hopefully, we're, uh, be able to go back to the regular raises next year, when our budget season.
I like it.
Just to ask, what is the possibility of taking a portion of that and giving it to city employees, and then maybe like 500 of that go back to city employees? And is there a way to give 200 of that back to the taxpayers for the surplus that we have?
I would say no, not logistically. You'd have to change the rate. Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to ask.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think that's good. So, um, if everybody feels on board with that, we can bring that back at a next meeting for a vote. But I think I got the pulse.
And to clarify, we're just looking at the surplus.
Yes, so we'd use whatever the number you said.
16, 201.
Yeah, take that with employees, and I'm on board with that.
I mean, it was money we weren't counting on, and then the employees basically saved it for us and found it, so we can reward them with it back, you know? Maybe that'll come around again this next year for y'all, you know, and see how that works. So anyway.
Sounds like a good plan. Good job, team. Um, okay, I'm moving on to consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull off for question, further discussion? If not, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Cambo and a second from Mr. Pertle. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next on our list here is zoning item. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 24-14. Ms. Choi. Rolled off the top. My name is Harder. It's okay, she called me in.
Mayor Ishihara, council members, and Mr. McPhee. The city of Longview is requesting a rezone of property located along George Ritchie Road, east of Prince Drive or Prince Road, from general retail shown on this map to single family four. The previous zoning ordinance permitted single-family homes within the general retail zoning district. However, the current UDC does not. Therefore, these properties are considered non-conforming. In order to correct this issue, staff is requesting a rezone of these properties to bring them in compliance with zoning. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions for Ms. Choi? A public hearing is required. I will open the public hearing now. I do not have any comment cards on this item, and I do not see anyone that wishes to speak, so I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Uh, next on to action items, consider a resolution adopting a five-year capital improvements program and allocating funds for the 25, 26 projects. Mr. Archer.
Good evening, mayor, council, Mr. McPhee. Tonight for council consideration, I have the 2025 CIP project list. To get started, I wanted to just talk about, uh, that the CIP was adopted by council and the, the policies were adopted by council in 2000. We compile this list based on the master plans and studies, such as the comprehensive plan, master plans, those kind of things. And then we assign a priority and urgencies to those as well. This is last year's list. I wanted to show that. That was 5.6 million for these projects. Some of them are ongoing right now. And then let me start by talking about drainage. Our drainage fund is supported by a quarter cent sales tax. That tax was established in 1991 as a funding source to address drainage issues within the city of Longview. We prioritize our drainage issues by, first, the, if it's affecting a building, it's actually penetrating into the building. Second is major erosions. And then third, we're maybe a property that's flooding, or, um, you know, that's our lowest priority. In this case, this is two homes that it would actually be cheaper for the citizens to purchase the homes as opposed to do the repairs that would be needed to prevent the, the flooding in the area. The next item we have is a convention center multi-use, uh, event pavilion. It would be located there at the side of Mod Cobb. It is, there's a pavilion in the master plan. This is a different scope, but it does meet that requirement of that master plan. And like we've talked about before, here's the wastewater improvement projects. This is Crest View, Ruth Drive, Center Street, and Bertha Avenue. And then the rehabilitation of the High Street Waters, uh, elevated water tower. Our water system has three projects. That's the Alpine Road. This is 80 to Valley, Kenwood Lane, Avenue B to Northwest, and then Wood Place, Isaiah Drive to Camilla Drive. And that's the water system improvements. CDBG is a total at 230,000. This is coming out of CDBG, uh, but being used for water improvements on that area of Boulevard Street and Holiday. And so here's our list of the capital improvement projects for FY 24, 25. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Archer? Go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. So when we went over the, um, budget and the water rate increase or whatever it was included in the CIP, all of those...
Yes, it's exactly the same list.
Same thing, but it left out that we will be pulling many money from the, uh, CDBG.
Yes, that's addition, because it's not out of the water fund. It is out of the CDBG funds.
So when we did the water increase, did we not factor that in, that the water increase would take care of all those projects? Or did this just come like, hey, well, we calculated it, we needed to pull from this grant?
We, we calculated that assuming that we would get this money from CDBG for these repairs.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Archer?
Um, this just came up, so the High Street storage tank rehabilitation. So I also saw Arts Longview got a grant for that.
Yes, they did. Yeah. So... So it's Arts Longview logo will be going on there as, and this is our matching fund, because we'll do this rehabilitation to that, that tower, and then that'll be the matching fund that they'll be able to use to get that grant.
Awesome. All right. Good job. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Archer? If not, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and I need a second.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? CIP list is approved. Next on our action items is resolution approving the Longview Economic Development Corporation 2024, 25 budget. Mr. Mansfield, and I see you have some board members with you. If you would care to introduce them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate them being here today. We've got an outstanding LECO board. Really, that's where the credit goes, making business decisions to help our community grow and develop. And we'll see later on that the successes that we've had. We have Ranjit Kadali, who is our, our board chair, Alan Mallory, Richard Kilby, and Laura Rektinwald. Some other board members were unavailable tonight, but really appreciate them being here and showing support of the budget that we've worked on this year.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Excuse me. So what I've said, we, we've had a great year this year. It's, it's funny, I've been doing this, uh, in this crazy career for over 30 years now, and every year during a presidential election, things just slow down. I don't know why. Business still has to do business regardless of who's elected, but it always is the case. But regardless, we've still been quite busy for this past year. Proposals generated 19, site visits five. The proposals generated is actually down, but on average, we have about three site visits a year, which means that we've made it into the final rounds of the cut. So we're very excited about that. So, we're very excited about that. Currently working on 56 open projects. That's down a little bit from last year. Again, it's presidential election year. And 17 are very active that we continue to have communication with, that we're providing information for, and trying to get Longview to be the last spot on the list. So, what you can see on the success, the projects in the last eight years that we have incentivized, showing a total capital investment of over 1.6 billion dollars and a net gain to the city of almost 200 million over a 10-year period. And one thing to point out, these are the projects that we've incentivized. This is not necessarily the projects that we've been involved with that we don't incentivize, such as the activity that's taking place in South Longview with custom commodities, the racetrack, that we've had some involvement with. And those are just few examples. We are constantly providing information to developers, to real estate developers, to bankers, on what the economic impact or economic activity of Longview is. So, we're very involved in these projects, maybe not necessarily from an incentive standpoint because by state law, we are limited as to what we can provide an incentive to. And it's exciting, too, when I drive around town, when I get a chance to, and you see activity and construction going on in, in just about every sector of the city. So, that's really exciting. The traffic gets a little bit problematic.
We don't complain about traffic.
That's one of the things that we deal with, right? So, one thing that we do have, even though we're a type A corporation that's limited as to the type of companies we can incentivize, in 1996, the voters did give us some very limited type B authority. And we've been, again, very good servant of that money and working with the city and providing the type B projects at the request of the city. And you'll see over the past, since 2016, 16 and a half million dollars of type B projects that we've helped fund that's removed that burden from the city. And those projects, of course, one of the largest is George Ritchie, the trail system, the drainage and sewer improvements for the Fresh Project. Recently, we committed a million dollars for Teague Park that we have not spent yet. Sidewalk project, which we're about to underway to improve the sidewalks and make them ADA compliant around our office. So, again, and we have, we have ongoing yearly debt associated with that, and that's the bond payment, the bonds that we issued for the trail system. So, this helps remove that burden from the city to provide these quality of life amenities that we need that help attract residents here. So, going into our budget from this year, you'll see, as someone mentioned earlier, our, our proposed revenue is down. We do base these projections from Angela and her team. As it relates to the city's budget, we're down a little bit this year, 7.8 million. The interest revenue, we, we do have our funds in a money market account. We were able to increase that rate since the interest rates have moved up. And we're projecting 125,000. That number is very conservative. And I do that intentionally because the interest rates are very fluid right now. So, it's a very conservative number, but that gives us a good estimate of the revenue that we have to work with this year. So, going forward into our programs and projects, our industry, this is where we use, this is the money that we use to market the city. And for our travel, for marketing events, for our memberships into different partnership programs that we have with Team Texas, TEDC, and various others. Our retail development, that is primarily for travel, updating our retail numbers. We don't incentivize retail, so to speak, because we can't by state law, but we still market for retail because the sales tax is what fuels us at LECO. Talent is our workforce development, and that is primarily work keys. The projects is 300,000. Again, that's part of the type, quasi-type B that we provide to the city for public transit system. We view that as necessary to help people get to work, get to the hospitals, healthcare, get to retail services. So, it's critical that we continue to fund that system. GNA, our personnel and benefits, there's no, no pay increases associated with our personnel this year. The increase was associated with the TR, TMRS that we just went on to this past year that we've made some adjustments for. Office expenses have gone up a little bit. Inflation has created that scenario. Our insurance and our professional services covers our accounting, auditing, and legal. Our business parks, we do maintain two business parks, as you know. That includes the 90,000 is for bush hogging, litter collection. It's unfortunate that we have to pay for that. It's a sore spot for me, but we do have to budget for that. And then you see the bonds, bond debt service. And then for our non-fixed assets in our office FFNE, computer replacements, we're on a rotating system for replacements of computers. And then real property, when we receive RFIs and we have to prepare site plans for developers, that's where that money comes from. So, all of this pretty much is staying exactly the same with a little bit of increase in the office supplies and our, our programs. And then here you see our scheduled incentive payments. This is what we are scheduled to pay out for the incentive projects that we have on the books now. You'll see that number's gone up, but that's because we incentivized a couple of projects this past year, namely Dallas Plastics and Aon Coil, were two of the larger ones. So, we have 2.8 that we've unallocated strictly to be used for incentivizing new projects that we have coming up for this upcoming fiscal year. We also have a separate budget, just like the city, in our capital improvements plan. So, you'll see that we've already paid out for the trails project. We finished that up this past year. The new office headquarters, we are finished paying for that. That 200,000 is to improve the park or the sidewalks around the city block, bring them into ADA compliance. And that budget, the amount that we have budgeted, or the estimated cost for that is well within the budget. And then other potential capital projects, we have that as a catch-all because occasionally, we have to move, if we have a project come into a park, we may have to move a gas line, or a water line, or a sewer line. But we have allocated 300,000 of that for future type B projects for the city, for y'all to come back at some time during the year and say, hey, we would like for this to be allocated for that, at which we would approve from that budget. And you'll see that we are not transferring any money from the general fund into this. We're just keeping it same within the capital budget. So, that's, that's all I have in our budget. Everything's pretty much the same. We're still doing great things and still have a lot of projects that we're working on. And we're hoping we get them off the fence here soon.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mansfield?
Can we go back to that previous?
Can you go back one slide for us?
Maybe.
She working on it.
Which one?
The very last one.
The capital.
Okay. The other potential capital projects, the 400,000, is that something we had talked about earlier?
Yes.
Included in that?
Yes, sir.
Well, I want to thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
You're welcome.
You, you had to put up with my ranting and raving, but I appreciate that.
We're all on the same page.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I just, we would like to comment, Wayne, and to your team. We are really grateful for the work that you do. And it is your work that brings business here and helps us develop. And that's what we rely upon when we're sweating over our budget for property taxes and sales tax and bringing jobs and quality of life. And that's what keeps our kids here and brings people here. So, thank you for the investment that you're making in Longview. It benefits all of us.
Well, I really think, and Roland and I had this conversation just yesterday, I believe, I think this next year, and Angela, I hope this will make you happy, too. With the projects that we have coming on board with Longview ISD and their bond issue with Eastman, hopefully we'll get underway soon. With those, these are really large projects that are going to bring a lot of construction activity, already bringing notoriety to Longview. In fact, I'm leaving for Detroit here in a couple of weeks for Site Selector, Site Selectors Guild. And they're doing a case study on the location of Eastman's project here in Longview. That's bringing a lot of notoriety for site selectors all over the country. And I think once those projects, in particular, the resident, or the housing projects along Cotton in, in 259, it's going to bring more emphasis for retail development in that area of South Longview. So, I really think in the coming year, our sales tax is going to continue to improve and increase.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mansfield, as you know, I'm a big proponent for Interstate 20. And you and I are good friends as a former member of your board.
Yes.
I proudly served. I, I would just like to challenge yourself and hopefully Mayor Ishihara as well, that we give that corridor just a little bit more attention. I feel like there's some missed opportunities there. And I would like to offer myself, to not only to your office, because I am familiar with how it works, but also to Mayor Ishihara's office as well, if there's something that I can personally do to spearhead, something that we can really take advantage of that. And I know you're busy. I know your office is busy. But we can't help but to feel like we're missing something there somehow or another. And I'm willing to do my part in that process.
And I really appreciate that. And I agree. I mean, I 20 is certainly, along with our water, is our greatest asset. Well, really, our people here are our greatest asset, but having that corridor here. But I think that with the developments that are taking place with the Quick Trips and the racetrack, I believe the Kubuta dealership's going to move. But that construction activity breeds interest. And I think we'll continue to see that.
Thank you.
Good. Yeah. Thank you for your comment. Go ahead, Mr. Conley.
Yeah, I just want to commend Mr. Mansfield also. And as he was mentioning, Mr. Wade's mentioned Interstate 20, the development of Harrison Road and Fisher Road. We've had some industry there. And I appreciate Mr. Mansfield's work in to develop that side of town. There's a lot of opportunities I think could greatly benefit the west side of Longview. And I appreciate that, Mr. Wade.
We are absolutely cognizant of that. You know, we, we look at Longview, and it's not district-specific. We try to create options for developers, for projects, two or three options, and say, you know, what's the best fit for you? And then we try to make it work. But I think there's a lot of potential. Some of the buildings there, well, many of them are old. Some of them have been occupied, but we continue to submit RFIs on a couple of the vacant properties. And eventually, that's going to take. Because the interest is increasing.
Really appreciate that, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. And I see you back there, but we don't do questions during this part. But you can catch him on the way out, or you can catch one of us. Yeah, sorry, Andrew. Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
Oh, I just wanted to thank you and your team as well. As I look through this list, there's a lot of George Ritchie in District 5 on there. So, thank you guys for bringing development as well, as well to northwest Longview. And I'm really grateful for you and your team and the board. So, just wanted to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We do have an awesome team. I could, there's no way I could do it without them.
Yep, I do need a motion to approve the?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget is approved. Thank you so much, Mr. Mansfield. We are now on to items of community interest. Mr. Conley, you're up.
Well, I mean, it's a great day to be a pirate in District 1. We, you know, I coached football for 15 years. And the saying is, when you're winning at football, everything's going great. And because, and I want to commend, we, we did Pine Tree, Coach Botman, Coach Holder, congratulate the football team and all the coaches and players. We got a big win versus Gilmer, defending state champions. And then we beat Van last week. And I want to talk about that because it was our first home game. And the pride, when you have a Friday night football game, it's not just about the football aspect. It's the, it's Mark Perry and the band, the, the drill team, the, the color guard, the cheerleaders. And just, we also do promote, we want our community to be there. We give out incentives for kids. We cook, give out free hot dogs, kids that have had great behavior, great attendance. And so, their families also get a free pass to the game and hot dogs. But just, I'm just really proud. And what I'm really proud of is not just the winning, the way it's happening. It's, it's not just about talent. It's about teaching, hard work, and respect, and really getting the most out of yourself and each other. And I'm really proud to be part of Pine Tree. And we are two and O, Mr. Wade. And I congratulate the Lobos. I know I'm undefeated, too. But, but the second?
You knew it was coming, right?
Yeah. But the second thing I would like to mention, it's on the, I think of the slide, really impressed by our Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center and the fact that we, in Ingram Park on September 21st, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and free, free is always a great word, you know? And so, free microchipping at the park. So, anybody that has a pet that needs that, I believe that's awesome service in partnership with Longview Paws and doing great things. And I just want to make sure everybody's aware that that's happening at Ingram Park on the 21st from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., free microchipping.
Mr. Conley, you've been working on your Spanish, and you didn't even read the Spanish part.
I got the gratis part. I can do that.
Microchip.
Microchip in, in, in el parque.
Gracias.
Bien? And I'd like to, I'd like to thank Mr. Gamboa, Senor Gamboa, for my aprendo, aprendo español.
I'm still a señorita for like five more years.
Señorita, señorita. Thank you for recognizing my, I am trying to improve my español. So, but thank you guys.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Moore.
I've been just happy that football's back. Go Lobos. Congratulations to Lobos, always rooting. Lobo, once a lobo, always a lobo.
Mr. Wade?
Yes, Mayor Ishihara, I do have an announcement tonight. Thank you, ma'am. Parents and guardians, don't miss out on the one-of-a-kind DEFY conference for you and your sixth through 12th grader. Guardians will experience drug, alcohol education, mock bedrooms, giveaways, door prizes, and more. Students will experience mindfulness through yoga. I'm a yogi, so that's good. Learn about positive coping skills. Engage with the Longview Police Department and Longview Fire Department on panel, on a panel discussion. Receive fun giveaways and more. Dinner and limited childcare are provided, and seats are limited. That's Tuesday, September the 24th, 5:30 to 7:30 at MODCOB Convention Center, 100 Grand Boulevard here in the beautiful city of Longview. And also to mention, tomorrow night, the mighty Longview Lobos will be having their first home game. And so, I would like to encourage everyone to go out and support Longview Lobos. We know the real football's played on the east side of town. So, come out, support those Lobos. Thank you.
Mr. Newton.
Y'all getting spicy up on those dais.
Great Mrs.'s chance to stay very mindful, very demure. I'd like to invite everybody to the District 4 Town Hall meeting at 5:30 p.m. Thursday, October 17th, at the Event Center on Alpine. A big shout out to the East Texas Builder Association. They're great to work with and glad to have my second town hall there. So, come out, hear all the great things that Longview District 4 and everybody's doing. Appreciate you. That's all.
Excellent. Okay. Ms. Gamboa?
I do not have slides for these, but this weekend is Broadway at The View with Arts View. So, make sure you get your tickets for that. The talent, oh my gosh, is mind-blowing. I got to go behind the scenes and watch them go through their performance. And I think these people did come from Broadway. I'm not sure. They attempted to let me dance in it. And I, I'm glad that somehow I got out of that because I would have embarrassed them because they're like top five, five-star performers. And I was definitely like a half-a-star performer. So, yeah, very grateful for that. And Miss Gregg County is tonight. So, good luck to all the beautiful young ladies competing to be Miss Gregg County tonight. Make sure you go out to the fair and support them. They will be winning a spirit award for who's the most spirited. Special shout out to Miss Springhill and to Miss Longview Belinda Alvera, who I helped train for tonight's competition. So, good luck to all the beautiful ladies competing.
Awesome. Mr. Pertle?
I want to give kudos to Mr. Conley because he is sitting up here tonight while his family is at a football game tonight. And it's hurting him and eating him up. And he talks longer than anybody. So, good luck with that one. That's all.
Mr. McPhee?
I have nothing.
I have a couple of announcements. And I'd like to start with our condolences. We are missing our city secretary, Ms. Angie Shepherd, tonight due to the loss of her father. So, our love and prayers go out to their family. My first item for tonight is college and career. There we go. Thank you. The city of Longview and Area Economic Development Corporations will host a college and career expo from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Thursday, October 10th. This will be held at MODCOB. Those interested in connecting and sharing information with high school students that are across Region 7 and Region 8 should contact us at the email listed below. Next is our peanut butter challenge. I did bring my peanut butter. There we go. Couple of them. And we are competing through a friendly competition hosted by the East Texas Food Bank, as you heard earlier, who opened a Longview location at the end of last year and is currently feeding a lot of our families. And we are competing against Tyler. So, I would really like to win. And I do need your help to do that. So, as you can see, we are working together to raise 30,000 jars of peanut butter. You can drop those off at any of our three Super 1 locations or Brookshures. You can also bring them to City Hall. That goes through September 27th. And so, if you wanted to help with your work to do a drive or to bring stuff to us, I would be glad and happy to take your peanut butter donations. And of course, that all stays local. You can also donate monetarily, but you are actually helping people that will use the peanut butter that needed in our community. And that's obviously the real winner there. But also really would still like to be Tyler.